Good evening. I'd like to welcome you, everyone, to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, May 19th, 2025. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings, but do allow for public comment at the end of this work session. Please note, all speakers are limited to three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take any action vote on items during a work session other than to place -- we take a vote to place an item on the next council meeting for official vote. Council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel, and minutes are taken. I'm Ron Williams, Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Lexington. I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
To his left is Jeanne Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilman Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
For the invocation and pledge tonight, Councilman Carnes, would you please have our invocation? And Ms. Michaels, if you would please lead us in the pledge.
Yes, sir. Will do. Before we pray tonight, I just want to let everybody know that Mayor Livingston is out tonight. She has a granddaughter that's wrestling with some health things that popped up in her life this past week, and so she's taking care of her family. And we'll certainly be lifting them up in prayer. She asks for the prayers of our community as they try to figure out exactly what's going on with her granddaughter. Let's pray. Father, we do pause and just ask for your favor on our lives. We need daily grace, and we need your blessing in order for us to experience all the joy, all the prosperity, all the love, all the good things you have for us. And so we know all those things come from you, so we ask for them in abundance. We know your word says you don't have because you don't ask, and when you do ask, you ask wrongly so that you can spend it on your own desires. And so with a clean conscience, we ask for your favor tonight on our town. And we do ask for your favor on Hazel and her family, and especially for Riley, who's wrestling through some things, and pray that you would put your healing hand on her, that you would restore her to health, and give her back her vitality, and give them a clear path forward. We live in a fallen, difficult world, and at times, some things enter in, cause a lot of turmoil and pain. And so we pray for your blessing on Livingston family and all their downlines. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, all. Mr. Carnes, appreciate you praying for Riley. This time, I'll now call the meeting to order. Council met an executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed the following matters. Under legal briefing regarding the ordinance 2025-05, we had a discussion related to a proposed incentive for economic development. We had a discussion regarding to the West Columbia water litigation. We had a discussion regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lyle, second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That'd be unanimous. Are there any items of deletions from tonight's work session agenda? Okay, moving on. Tonight, we've got a presentation from Ms. Miriam Atra, who I've known for quite a long time. She's President/CEO of the Capital City Lake Murray Country Tourism. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman or Vice Chairman, Mayor. I brought along with me tonight Susan Okane as our new Director of Operations, but we wanted to come and share some news about what our Regional Tourism Board does specifically to the Town of Lexington. Our Regional Tourism Board was formed by the state, and we're charged with promoting Richland, Lake City, Tannenberry, and Salida Counties. This upcoming year, we have dedicated $1.8 million to direct marketing. That brings in the mega event that spreads the word across the world about everything that this four-county region, including the Town of Lexington, has to offer. We dedicate our $1.8 million to specific marketing and advertising, and we just completed something specific for the Town of Lexington. It is like herding cattle to get four-county governments to communicate and to be able to get all the municipalities in and towns in between. It is a tremendous geographical scale to work. But we have a dedicated staff, and we touch every form of marketing. I wanted Susan to share some information.
Good evening, Honorable Members of Council. Thank you for having us this evening. You have a couple of handouts in front of you, and I'm not going to read through all of this, so at your leisure. If you need some good reading, please, I encourage you to do so. But just last year, with social media impressions, I want to bring a couple of highlights to your attention, specifically to the Town of Lexington. When you look at national PR coverage, you are going to notice that more than nine million impressions across the nation came directly to the Town of Lexington, and that's up 15% from the previous year. Also, you're going to want to see down there 50.3,000 impressions from Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and YouTube. So I think those are some good numbers to share with you all. What we've noticed at Capital City Lake Murray Country is that with our marketing efforts, year in and year out, we are seeing everything really trending upwards. So we know that the dollars that we are receiving and the money that we are putting towards marketing are really making a true impact. Something that we also, moving on, another handout you have is we had the opportunity to be a part of the umbrella for the SHOT Herd Round the World. I'm not sure if any of you all had an opportunity to attend that event on May 19th, I'm sorry, on April 19th, but our Vice President of Marketing served on that committee. And with her at the table there, she really led her marketing expertise to send out news releases, make sure we were covered on social media. You can see there in your handout all the members of that committee and what that looked like. You can also see the amount of money that Capital City Lake Murray Country spent or contributed to that commemoration. You can see, if you continue to flip through, the number of links and shares from our media outlets. More than 20 of our local media outlets were supportive of that and shared the information that we were sending out. And when it comes to our Facebook and Instagram reach, going through the numbers, I saw that it would be anywhere from a minimum of 700 to upwards of 4,000 when it came to unique visitors and who we were reaching with that. But if you flip to the very back, when I was talking about the money spent, you will see a more specific breakdown of what that looked like, who we were targeting, where we were targeting, the number of impressions from social media to television stations to our e-blast, everything that we cover to promote the Town of Lexington and our region as part of the 250th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last important thing to remember. When we talked about that $1.8 million, remember that all the money is pooled together, but we're matching it with steak dollars. So we are expanding your marketing budget by being able to do that. We have two hot items getting ready to happen. Next year, we have Revolutionary War, the scattered regions, which we're the member of. We are promoting that nationwide, specifically all the amenities and rev war stories in your town and in our region. And then secondary, in 2027, Lake Murray turns 100 years old. We are going to have a week-long festival of Lake Murray and all the wonderful things, how it touches our community, how it has economic impact. And the marketing dollars will be spent nationwide for the largest reunion and picnic on Lake Murray and a military flyover from the oldest to the newest. That's just one event out of that week. We're looking forward to working with you. We appreciate all the accommodations, tax dollars. We want you to know we value those dollars. We earmark those dollars to make it work for the Town of Lexington.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Anybody? Susan Okane, I will ask you this quick question. You head down on the bottom right-hand corner of the sheet, Google impression searches, and it showed the top pages and top queries. Could you by chance forward to staff what the numbers were for each one of those pages individually?
Absolutely.
All right. That'd be great. Thank you.
We have a lot of data. Anytime you need data regarding tourism specifically, feel free to reach out to us. We're happy to provide you with a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to business items. First business item tonight is from Transportation Director Randy Edwards. And I believe we're going to bring up Kimberly Horn Consultant, Mr. Joe Robertson, as well.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. In August 24, the Town of Lexington entered into an agreement with FHWA to, in accepting a $160,000 grant to put together a safety action plan called SS4A, which stands for Safe Streets for All. In December of '24, this council adopted the resolution to establish the Target Zero Policy to works towards minimizing traffic deaths, severe injuries, both for drivers and pedestrians. We've held, we've been very busy. We've held numerous stakeholder groups, public engagement meetings, and have concluded those findings. And so tonight, we're here to present to you, as we bring this to a close, all of our findings. It's really just for you to see that we've been very busy. And then we'll be going, presenting to you a path forward over the next couple weeks as we embark on Phase Two. So with that, I give you Joe Robertson, who is with Kimberly Horn, who we contracted with to perform this study. And I'll hand out the presentation for all.
Thank you, Randy. And good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Happy to be here with y'all tonight. As Randy mentioned, we've been very busy since last September, I believe, is when we got started on everything. So got a presentation. There's certainly a lot of information here tonight, and you know, for the sake of time, I'll keep it high level, but certainly happy to answer any questions y'all have once we get towards the end. But you know, as a resident of Town of Lexington, this certainly hits close to home for me. I know we've all known people that have been impacted by crashes and transportation safety issues in the town. And you know, if nothing else, it clogs up traffic, which is a major issue. So anything that we can do to make our town's transportation network safer certainly be a positive. So as Randy mentioned, this is just a quick overview of the SS4A process itself. It's a federally funded grant program. So the town was awarded an action plan grant to prepare the action plan that we're talking about tonight. As Randy also mentioned, y'all adopted the resolution back in December with the Vision Zero goal that the town is looking to work towards. And now we're preparing the plan. I won't read through all the bullets here, but you can see that outlines a lot of the guidelines that we need to hit to be eligible for an implementation grant, which is the next step to hopefully get implementation dollars to actually build these improvements. So a quick overview of the process itself. It's a lot of data gathering, analyzing that data, coordinating with stakeholders. We worked with Town of Lexington Police Department, certainly town staff, county representatives, SCDOT, county EMS and first responders, a whole slew of folks. We also engaged the public, which I'll talk a little bit about that as well. And now we're working into this final step of identifying the recommendations that will wrap up in the action plan report for that implementation grant step. So this is a high-level overview of the crash data. We looked at five years of data from 2019 to 2023. During that time period, just within the Town of Lexington, there were about 5,700 crashes reported. About 17% of those crashes involved a fatality or a serious injury or some form of injury. The good news is you can see the blue bars trending downward over those years. However, the percentage of injury crashes has slightly been ticking up over those years. Certainly something that we need to address through this plan. A little bit on the stakeholder and public engagement. We did an online survey, and we also had a public meeting several months ago. You can see here these two questions of how comfortable are, you know, do you feel driving or walking and biking in Lexington? Vast majority of folks said that they are either very uncomfortable or uncomfortable, which is again, you know, about what we would expect to see just based off the conditions as folks are driving around. We also had a map component that you can see here. We got nearly 600 comments on here. So the red dots is typically places where folks have identified an issue, or they say that they don't feel safe, they have a specific comment. And then the yellow dots on here are ideas or, you know, things that folks said that they would like to see as a result of this plan. So that combined with the data was very helpful in us, you know, identifying those high crash and high-risk areas, and then help it to formulate our recommendations. So this is a map of the Town of Lexington, and the crashes are mapped in what we call a heat map. Might be a little bit hard to see at this scale, but basically the red spots are the hot spots where most of the highest frequency of crashes are occurring. This map also shows where fatal and serious injury crashes occurred. So through this process, you could see the high-crash intersections and segments primarily along US 378, US 1, and then some intersections along SC 6 and kind of scattered throughout town as well. So these are the high-crash intersections. Everyone that we've shown these to, whether it's stakeholders, town residents, you know, Town of Lexington PD, no one was really surprised by this list. Everybody looked at it and said, yep, that seems about right. The good news with these is that a lot of these locations have already been identified for potential improvements through the LTIP. And a big piece of, you know, the safety action plan is showing that we're being consistent with local planning efforts. I think that's a big positive through this exercise as well, validating that a lot of the work that Randy and his staff have been doing over the years is on track with what the data is pointing us to as well. Similarly, we have these high-crash segments, kind of like I mentioned several slides back, a lot of locations along US 378, US 1, and a couple other locations throughout town. The general trend that you'll see here is there's a lot of angle crashes, and there's a high correlation between angle crashes and injuries. So if we can, if we can fix a lot of the angle crashes, then we can help reduce injuries significantly. So getting into the specific locations, which is kind of the main, the point that we want to drive home tonight, is we've taken all this data. The report is going to have all of the analysis and input that we received documented, a whole slew of recommendations. But we want to position the top five projects that we'd like to put in the action plan for the implementation grant here before y'all tonight. So these first two kind of go together. With the angle crashes and the injuries along 378, you've got this segment from Kaufman Road to Hope Ferry Road, about two and a half miles long. As I'm sure y'all are aware, you know, five-lane section, a lot of driveways, a lot of angle crashes that are happening through here. So access management would be the top priority strategy. If you're unclear on what that term is, it's basically putting in raised medians where you can, having strategic, you know, three-quarter full-access openings where you can, and then also consolidating business driveways. If there's opportunities for shared connections to reduce those conflict points, that can be huge in terms of reducing crashes. Similarly, this is another segment of 378 and US 1 on the west side of town, so basically from Gibson Road to West Butler Street. Again, a lot of driveways, a lot of closely spaced access points, not a lot of medians through there. So it lends itself to a lot of angle crashes. Getting into intersections, the intersection up by the Walgreens at US 378, Old Chatham Road, West Main Street, this was identified as the top crash intersection in town. So it certainly made our list here. Got some recommendations for consolidating accesses, trying to clean up the merge in front of the Walgreens and Wells Fargo itself, and then some pedestrian improvements at that channelized right turn. If you've ever had to cross the street there, it can get pretty dicey. Traffic does not like to slow down for you. These two are several of the other intersections recently, and it's kind of tricky for this plan because there was already an issue at SC 6 and Industrial and Glassmaster. And then the past couple of years with some additional development and SCDOT reworking the interchange off-ramp, there seems to be a lot more crashes that have been occurring. So we don't have all of those more recent crashes reflected in this data, but we know that it's an issue. So we've highlighted that intersection as well for improvements. Also Gibson Road at Hendrick Street, the current four-way stop sign intersection, we recommend converting that one to a roundabout. There's a decent amount of angle crashes and stop sign running that occurs at that intersection today. The fifth project is kind of lumping all of these pedestrian safety recommendations together. We got a lot of input from the public on certain streets that either don't have a sidewalk, or there may be gaps where you have a sidewalk here and here, but you know, there's nothing in between. And then also pedestrian crossing improvements, like up here in front of the Radius Church and Lexington Chamber, there's this crosswalk there, but we would recommend putting in an RRFB, Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. Push the button, and it flashes. And then similarly, put one of those in downtown on Main Street. So that's kind of where we've been, walking through the next steps. As Randy mentioned, we're working fast to try to hit this deadline for the implementation grant application. So tonight is the summary presentation. On the 29th, we'll have a final action plan document for y'all to review. You know, whatever comments y'all have back on that, we can put those in. And then June 2nd would be the adoption of the safety action plan if all goes well. And then the deadline for that implementation grant application is June 26. And so as discussed tonight, those are kind of the five top-tier projects that we would recommend pursuing grant funding for. And then once all that's in place, there would need to be a biannual update of the safety action plan. So working with stakeholders, continuing to monitor crash data and seeing what kind of impact the improvements are having on reducing fatalities and serious injuries. So a lot of information in a short period of time. I'll let Randy finish up his piece, but certainly happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Joe, you mentioned downtown Main Street, an improvement. Are you talking about the crosswalk where the shrubbery is, where the island is, where people come across through the island? Is that what you're thinking about putting something on Main Street?
That was one of the potential RRFB locations that we had identified, the flashing white lights.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other immediate questions or?
Anybody else?
So what's before you, and I want to make one clarification in the write-up that's been updated and will be updated if you move this forward to council agenda, is so what's before you is two things. One is to adopt the final safety action plan that will basically become ours and conclude the initial project as far as establishing through the SS4A actual safety action plan for the Town of Lexington. The second piece will be to authorize us to make application for these five proposed projects or project scenarios. For example, the pedestrian one is not defined as of, you know, exactly what it would be, but it certainly is, would come from that list of, you know, the smorgasbord of locations. We, we've updated the number to be somewhere around 12, $12 million. And my recommendation would be that actually, if you move this forward, that we recommend 12 to 15 till we get all the applications put together and the budgets established for each one of those projects, we can see where it can creep up that far. And so to authorize that going forward in the future, that we would have the ability to back up with 20% for that request. So outside, that would be $3 million that town would put up towards the $15 million expenditure. Just those two things need to go forward or are being asked to go forward. One, your adoption of this, and you will get this final completion of this presentation plus all the data. You'll get that on the, what did we say, the 29th? 29th for your review and then adopt it on the June 2nd council meeting. So that's one. Two would be to authorize us to move forward immediately with making the application so that we can hit the June 26 deadline for all five packages.
Okay. So Mr. Edwards, to be clear, you asking for two motions tonight? Are you asking for, can we wrap it all up in one motion?
You would need to. If he's asking you to take action on the block of the grant that needs to be on the agenda.
Right.
The request needs to be moved to the agenda under one vote.
Okay.
So adoption, which allows us to move forward.
Right. Then we have to put a second motion on the agenda, vote to put a second motion on the agenda for the $3 million he's asking for. Or can we put it all into one action item?
The $3 million needs to be authorized at the next meeting.
Okay.
Not for tonight.
Right. So we need two items put on the next agenda.
Yes.
Two separate items.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions for you, Randy. I had a neighbor reach out to me that was reading information about this, and he asked me an interesting question that I didn't know the answer to. I think I could logically figure it out, but I wanted to ask you. One of the things that he really cares about is handicap accessibility in town and parking. And he specifically was interested in Safe Streets for All, I think is more traffic-focused. But he asked if that, if this would take into consideration traffic being able to pass safely when a handicap individual is trying to get out of a car on Main Street, would there be any applicability for this as it relates to that? And I hope I explained that.
I think I understand. I think that comes into a question of, to, you know, ADA accessible parking with me is not, like, Main Street parking, on-street Main Street parking is not designed for ADA accessible parking. That requires offsets and those types of things which aren't available on Main Street specifically, or at least what we refer to the downtown 100 block. So considering where ADA parking, that's almost a different subject that's not addressed here, this is really pedestrian safety as it pertains to each crosswalk and how you get across the five-lane section, you know, and how the signal timings work and those types of things.
Okay. That's sort of what I expected. My next question would be, I've emailed you on a number of occasions about the crosswalk that Mayor Pro Tem just mentioned, and I guess, could you elaborate a little bit more? Would this specifically address those crosswalks? Because I think you said it's one of the ones.
It's simply one of the ones that's been identified.
Okay.
It doesn't actually rank as far as, like, this is really an unsafe because there are no incidents of pedestrian issues there. There is a mid-block crosswalk outside the courthouse here that may be more appropriate for an RRFB. It may be that the one in front of the chamber at the Radius Church, because the speeds of the cars are faster at those locations. So all that gets taken into account. So as we make application, we'll be looking for how to, how to wrap that up. Doesn't mean that we don't warrant some improvements at that location specifically at the 100 block, but we didn't find any data to support that there's actually any incidents there.
All right. And I'm gonna ask you a last question that's somewhat selfish, but I've gotten some questions from fellow bikers as well. Does this plan take into consideration any areas in town that could benefit from bike lanes or, in what would be my own personal opinion, wider bike lanes? Does this look at anything related to bike lanes in town and the safe travel through those?
Okay, so not specific to bike lanes, but to multi-use paths. As we look at creating connectivity, you know, I mean, that's definitely on the table as areas that make sense for a more pedestrian bicycle-friendly connection as opposed to just a curb and gutter sidewalk.
Similar to, I believe, isn't there something like that planned for the Corley Mill Split project?
Yes. Corley Mill Split has a multimodal path, like, behind a separation between the four through lanes, and then a separation, and then a 10-foot-wide walking path, which will be, you know, accessible with bicycles, et cetera.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for answering my questions.
Anyone else have any questions to Randy before we move on?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Carnes.
So a lot of these applications are on county and state roads. So what is, what would be the process for us reaching out to them for some monetary collaboration as far as our 20% match?
We certainly, I would think, can ask for some. I will advise you that Lexington County is doing their own Safe Streets for All, which is actually in the non-incorporated county. So globally, they're taking on the entire county to be looking at what their Safe Streets for All program looks like. They're behind us. Safe Streets for All program looks like. They're behind us. They actually patterned their plan after us. And so, so I don't know what the appetite would be specifically there. These are, our, our proposed improvements are specific to in-town areas.
Yeah. I don't know the answer either, but it seems like a, seems like an inequitable type scenario for us to leverage all our funds for, for county and state, to make improvements on county and state roads at 20 cents on the dollars. I think it's certainly, I mean, we certainly have significant investment in, in what you guys are doing and going after the grants, but I think, I don't know, maybe something for us to discuss. We, we need to discuss what it looks like for the actual owner of the roads to participate in, in their improvements. And then I wanted to ask Joe, can put you on the spot because I rode by the other day and I saw the new little oil change place over close to Melon Mushroom and a new small little median popped up, like tiny little median. We've had some median discussions around here recently. And so that was a tiny little median and then we actually have a pretty large landscape median. And I think you got a master's from Clemson University in transportation engineering. So let me read off your resume. Can you talk to us about medians and about thoughts on how we come up with small medians sometimes and then larger ones? And I know a lot of the conversation was just around emergency vehicles and things of that nature. Can you give us your conventional wisdom in your, since you deal with this every day in your, in your life? Can you educate some of us lay folks about it?
Yeah. So medians, excuse me, medians is definitely the most effective way to, you know, eliminate left turn and through angle conflicts on a, a busy roadway by physically restricting folks from being able to make those turning movements. You know, the difference between a, just a small raised concrete median and a landscaped median, a lot of that kind of depends on local preference in terms of the emergency vehicle access and any concerns that they've had. I know there's been some discussion recently. That's the first time that I've heard that, honestly. So haven't really encountered that, but I know a lot of times with the, the concrete median, certainly it's much easier for an emergency vehicle to navigate, whereas the, the wider landscaped ones may be a little bit more of a challenge. But I think a difference too is, you know, if there is a median there, if an emergency vehicle is coming through, drivers will typically make more of an effort to get out of the way than if it's just a center turn lane and they know the emergency vehicle can pass them in that. So.
So, but what I'm hearing you say is like in your normal engineering design type scenarios, you guys don't, you don't really take that into account. You have smaller medians and wider medians and that's, that's almost a preference. You don't really have a, you don't really have some kind of algorithm that determines what you're gonna do one way or the other.
Correct. I mean, a lot of it depends on the typical section of the roadway. You know, if you've got a wider roadway and you'd like to have a wider median, you can. But from an engineering standpoint, I'd say a median's a median because the purpose of it is to restrict those turning movements. So whether it's, you know, a couple feet wide or 12 feet wide, it's gonna ultimately have the same purpose.
Are you familiar with the one that was just laid down over by Melon Mushroom?
Uh, not specifically. I'm sure I've driven past it, but I hadn't paid that close attention to that one.
Yeah. I just, I rode by it once and I noticed it and I was just, I was curious. Maybe Randy would know. It just, that felt like something somebody could just run over. No? Is it bigger in real life than when I passed by in my truck? I felt like, I felt like I could go over it.
You could straddle it, but you're, you don't want to hit it. I mean, it's every bit of five and a half inches tall.
Okay.
You would think so. I mean, it's, it's that tall.
Okay.
That particular one, just for clarity, couldn't be a wider median because of the left turn into the local road Saluda Springs with me. So sometimes that's just pure geometry gets into it. You have to have that room for the left turn movement. And that particular median was put there because of the right out only on the new business that's coming there, the Valvoline. So it's, it's long enough to prevent, to, to discourage, I should say, left U-turns to get back into the facility or making a left out of the facility by going, you know, 15 feet and making a quick UE the other direction. So that's its purpose. It, it's a new SCDOT standard, that particular style. There's also one out here by the new Whataburger. It was put in as part of that. So that's a new standard just so that they don't have to address drainage. It's a cheaper way to handle drainage, allowing water to move through multiple places as opposed to collection boxes and pipe, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah. It had, it had a new look to it. Threw me off. So that, that makes sense.
That's the reason for the new look is just the, but I'm not quite sure how it would feel if you hit it.
So both bays coming out of the new Valvoline pla, both bays come out and it's right turn only?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So they now have full connection to Saluda Springs on the entrance.
Okay.
And so everybody, and there's cross connection to the Melon Mushroom site. So.
Perfect. Thank you all. Just trying to fill in my ignorance.
You're gonna be out there driving over it, aren't you?
I'm gonna need a lift kit.
You hit that, it's gonna be like hitting the curb. Anybody else? Allen, you good? Okay. It's okay. So I'll entertain a motion for, Randy was looking for two motions. One for the Safe Streets for All to go on our next agenda. So moved. Councilman Cornish, have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Smith. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That passes. Secondly, Randy asked for a resolution or an action item to put on the next agenda for funding for this Safe Streets issue. Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Smith makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, seconds. Any discussion? Sure we'll have some at the next meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. All right. Next, we will have proposed changes to the solid waste collection and disposal ordinance from our town administrator, Rachel Blee.
Thank you. We are entering into a new residential solid waste and recycling collection contract with Waste Management. And we're making changes to how yard debris, bulk waste and white goods are collected throughout town. This is for residential collection. Our current ordinance dates to the 1990s and needs some changes and updates to align with our new contract and our collection procedure. So tonight, we're seeking your input for establishing policy for collection of yard debris, bulk waste and white goods. We've got Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Metz here, who's gonna share a little bit with you, a reminder of how we currently collect things and pick your brain on how you'd like to make changes moving forward. Based on the input that you provide us tonight, we will redline the ordinance and bring to you for first reading, June 2nd.
Mayor, council. So we just signed an agreement with Waste Management. Right now, the current process, they collect all solid waste and yard debris once per week. Recyclables are picked up every other week. On our end, the town, we do take calls from everyone for tree debris and bulk waste that we collect each Thursday with our grapple truck. There's currently no fee for this service when people call in. We also pick up appliances or white goods once per month. There's no fee for this service as well. With the cost increasing and we are taking on the yard debris starting July 1, we've done some research and looked into some different avenues. And so there's five areas that we want to throw at you tonight. We're averaging around 10 to 12% of non-compliant trash pickup in our yard debris. Most of the issue revolves around the increase in packaging, cardboard boxes that people are leaving out, of course, with explosion in Amazon and UPS with everyone getting things shipped is an issue. So we do need to do some education and enforcement. We have some issues with people using our sidewalks for those type things. We have issues this morning with that, actually. So we are averaging about 5% of residents in the newer neighborhoods that have yard debris that we would pick up. And in the older neighborhoods, we're around 10 to 15%. So our number that we think we're gonna pick up per week outside of the leaf season is between 500 to 600 households that we will be responsible for. So with the change coming, the least impactful, fewer disruptions, we are going to continue doing it how Waste Management has done it. We will collect yard debris on the same route, same days, five days per week. We will collect bulk once per week and white goods once per month. This should allow us to attain some data on what we're picking up, how many miles we're traveling, fuel costs, that type thing. We would like to do that for at least six months. So we start July 1. We get to mid-October, leaf season should kick in and we will have more data to gather then. As there'll be no restrictions on, on how much we will pick up. But anyway, there are some things I want to go over with you and the sheet was laid up there for you. Fees, with the bulk and white goods, like to get your opinion, should we charge for the, for these services? It is a concierge type service. We do have some house cleanouts where we get large amounts of bedding, furniture, that type stuff. People call in, so we have the mileage, the staff time to go out and pick those things up. The landfill has also imposed some fees for Freon-based appliances. Right now, that's $15 per appliance. So our recommendation on that is institute at least a $25 removal fee for any white goods or appliances and $15 per yard fee for more than three yards of bulk. And just so you know, for a yard, we're calling one grapple load is, is a yard. So, so if we pick up more than three things, then there should be a fee is what we're saying. So the next issue is failure to remove roll carts within 24 hours. That's just a change in the ordinance. Right now, the residents are currently fined $5 for failure to remove and small businesses are fined $10. We would just like to make it even across the board at $10. Non-taxable property, the town ordinance currently states that you have the ability to set a rate for non-taxable property pickup. And I don't know of a, a fee for that right now. And we do have a few in town that are not being taxed and we pick up their garbage. So we would like to recommend that non-taxable property owners will be billed monthly at the rate the town pays the current contractor. The last thing I have for you is the limits. So Waste Management had a policy of accepting limbs that were cut in four inches long or four inches diameter, four foot long. Our current ordinance states that we would take normal household limits, but no lock clearing materials or no commercial cutting will be accepted. We are constantly asked, and maybe it's because of what happened with Hurricane Helene, but now we're being asked to come in and take very large piles of debris. And that's taking a good bit of our time. And so there are other municipalities with limits. Aiken, Casey, West Columbia, Orangeburg, Camden, Rock Hill, Urmo all have limits on the size that they'll take. And so our recommendation is impose a limit on the size and number of yards we will accept. So example, four inches wide, four inch long limbs, no more than three yards collected weekly and bagged debris shall not weigh more than 50 pounds. Cardboard boxes are included with yard debris and shall be broken down with no garbage in them. No yard debris pickup is provided to commercial establishments. So I noticed a lot, there's several areas there. You have any questions?
I had one question.
Go ahead.
You were saying something in here about potentially charging for removal of like just yard debris. Were, are you talking about the four inch limbs or four feet limbs and that kind of stuff? Or are you talking about, say, a rug or something like that?
No, I'm not, we're not proposing a fee for yard debris removal. We just, the limit, we need to limit the size. We could consider something if we want to take on larger sizes that there'd be a fee, you know, if you're getting into a pickup more than three yards.
Mayor? You're, you're stating of the size of the pile, not the size of the material.
Well, the material needs to be four inches, well, our recommendation is four inches around and four foot long to limit. They should be cutting those lengths.
Okay. Somebody, am I right? Councilman Smith, go ahead.
All right. I'm gonna call myself out.
Okay.
I recently put out an eight by 10 area rug. It disappeared. So somebody picked it up.
Sure.
Was I not supposed to do that? And I bring, and I call myself out for that, for the simple fact of I thought I was able to do that and maybe I am, maybe you're gonna correct me. But if not, how are we educating people on that? Because I, I'm on council and clearly maybe I did something wrong.
I may have video that, um, yeah, it, it's supposed to be in the roll carts. And Waste Management has done a good job on their end. They pick up a lot of that stuff. So what they do, they put a yard debris truck in front of the trash truck. They clear the cardboard, the carpets, whatever's there, office chairs, and then the yard debris, I mean, the, the trash truck will come in behind them and take it. But we do, they have been taking more than they probably should have, Waste Management has. So.
So what should I have done in that instance? Taken it to the dump myself or?
Well, that's always an option. We would like that. You can call us and schedule a time for us to come pick it up as a bulk item.
Okay. And, and forgive me, I'm just seeing this sheet. So if I called you and did that, do we currently charge a fee for that?
We don't charge fees.
And are you recommending that we do start charging a fee for that?
For the concierge service of getting called out, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. My next question is, you currently, or residents are currently fined $5 for failure to move. Roll carts and small businesses are charged 10. Why?
That was what was in the ordinance.
Is there a reason? Can anyone speak? Is there a reason that you see we should do that?
I just think it should be the same across the board instead of two different fees.
I think I can assist with that. It's a behavior modification tool to train folks when you should set your carts out and when you should put them back up. As we discussed this, when we were looking at the ordinance, neither one of us, well, definitely not us because we're both fairly new, but staff could not think of when we had issued such a fine previously. So education is clearly a component, but having some mechanism for behavior change, similar to code enforcement.
Imagine it's a tool that, it sounds like we don't use, but in case I decided just to leave my trash out by the road all the time and I just walk my trash out there so I don't have to roll it back and forth.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Which I will not do that. And then if, if you'll still allow me, I just have one more question. It says impose a $15 fee for any appliance or HVAC unit that has Freon in it. And these other fees that you're charging, how are you keeping up with that? Or maybe not you, but your staff. I mean, they're riding around doing the work. How are they actually able to keep up? That seems like a lot of administrative work. And then how are they getting the bill to the citizen?
Yeah. So we're gonna have to collect the data. The water bill is where, you know, if we get an address that has something like that, then we would come back to the water bill, that person and charge through that way.
But I, sorry, if I, if I may also, we don't currently charge that fee.
Right.
So currently, if we collect an appliance with Freon, we take it to the landfill, they charge us the $15 fee and the town has just been paying that fee.
Got it. Sorry about that.
Yeah. So what is being recommended is passing along that particular fee. Yeah, so what is being recommended is passing along that particular fee. That way, the general fund budget isn't, everyone isn't supporting one individual's appliance disposal fee. But to your point, and Jeff's as well, for now, until we could find a more efficient mechanism, we would just have to make the manual note and apply it to the utility bill.
And is the utility bill, I mean, that's their water bill. It's not like, you know, the bill for all the things at the town. It seems a little odd to me that it comes on the utility bill. But I don't know that we want to create a separate bill. I mean.
I think that's ultimately the reason.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, pro 10.
Go ahead.
I think it's important just to enter into the record that we negotiated a trash contract back in 2015, pre-COVID, when people could actually recycle and things of that nature, and got a 10-year deal. And we, we had maybe one of the greatest contracts in the history of the world, and we just rebid that to four or five bidders, and I think it went up, be close, about 40%, something like that, because we had a flat rate for 10 years. And so, everybody needs to understand that we just absorbed close to a million dollars in additional charges. Plus, we picked up part of this ourselves, where we're going to do our own picking up of yard waste. So, I think the ordinances we had in place were fine for our town about 30 years ago, but I certainly don't want to pay $15 for Gavin to throw his refrigerator out on the curb, and he don't want to pay for mine.
I hope I don't.
So, we, everybody, we're not taking services away, but I don't think the 22,000 citizens elected want to subsidize people who are junking out houses and throwing stuff on the curb. We don't want to subsidize tree folks who cut down big trees and have 12-inch diameter stuff they put on the curb. So, I think, I think these recommendations are fair for all and are long overdue. And so, first look at them, and I know we'll circle back to them at our meeting in June, but I think what we're looking for is what's equitable. And I've hauled a few appliances all the way to the landfill. Like, I'd pay a lot more than $15 just to get rid of those things at the curb. So, I do think we provide an excellent source of services here, but also want everybody to recognize that we did absorb almost a million-dollar increase in our budget this year and did so without raising taxes, and that's not sustainable. It's a hard thing to do. So, thanks for the work and look forward to implementing some of this in the days to come.
Thank you, Councilman Corns. Anybody else? All right, Jeff, I'll ask you one real quick. What is a non-taxable property considered as? Can you give me an example?
The examples we found mostly nonprofit are church properties in town.
Okay. All right. You have anything else you want to add before you? Anyone have, want to make a motion to put this on the next agenda?
So moved.
Councilman Corns makes the motion. We have a second?
Second.
Councilman Michael seconds it. Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. All right. Any comments from the public regarding any items listed on tonight's agenda? Any questions from the news media? I don't believe news media's here. Any comments from the staff?
Counsel.
All right. Now, do we have any comments from council members tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Go ahead, Councilman Corns.
I just wanted to ask, Jessica, could I ask you a question real quick? I was hit up this past week by multiple people who were inquiring about something that got put out there in the public sphere about some kind of $3,000 proposed fee to paint a service station owned by Dr. Lachin Hatemi of Veritas. I just didn't know where that went. People were asking me if we charged $3,000 fee for that. I'm somewhat familiar with our building permit process, but can you speak to that? Can you clarify that?
Yes, sir.
Because there was a lot, there was a lot of chatter about it.
Yes, sir. We actually do not require a permit for painting. If it's a commercial property that's located in our commercial corridor, we do ask for paint samples to ensure that it meets architectural appearance, but we do not require a permit for painting. The contractor simply needs to have a business license, which would not amount to $3,000.
Okay. So, just more misinformation out there in the blogosphere?
Yes, sir.
There's quite a lot of that. Be careful where you get your news. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mayor pro 10.
Yes, sir. Councilman Smith.
Could I just also say that when that was posted online, I just want to thank you. We were on the phone at 7:50 in the morning, me and you, the mayor and our town administrator, investigating that because we were all concerned about this so-called $3,000 fee and knew that it didn't sound right. And if that really had been quoted, we wanted to fix that because it was not accurate.
Correct.
So, I just want to thank you for being here so early and on the phone and on it. I couldn't believe you called me and I was like, you're already at work. And I learned that you get here quite early in the morning, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry that you have to deal with things like that on Facebook.
It's all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Just want to take a quick moment and wish Councilmember Smith a happy belated birthday. Last Wednesday, I think he hit a milestone. Hope it was a great day. We also want to wish a very happy upcoming birthday to our mayor. This Thursday will be her birthday. I will not tell you how many, although she told everybody how many mine was.
29. 29.
I think she said 21 plus 39 times or something.
29.
Yeah, she redoing it 39 times. Mayor, I hope you have a great birthday. If y'all see the mayor around on Thursday, please, please wish her a happy birthday. That concludes our business for tonight's work session. Thank you for watching, and without objection, we are adjourned.